Okay, we will call the Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as long.
Changes to the agenda.
No Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Helmar.
Here.
Commissioner Helmar.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt.
Here.
Okay, moving right along to public comments. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. Did we have any public comments?
I, oh, it looks like we do have one person.
With a, with a comment, or?
With a comment. Ms. McGowan?
Okay.
You should be able to...
Forgive me, I'm commenting on item number one.
For the public hearing?
Yeah, for the public hearing?
I can't respond.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now, yes.
Oh, yeah, the public hearing.
Okay.
They can do it at the public hearing if they want.
If you want, you can, you can make your comments now or during the public hearing, we have to open it up to citizens for comment then. If you want to hold your comments until we're actually on that topic, that would be...
Yes, thank you. I'll do that.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to you then. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to the information and consent calendar. We have two items, approval of the minutes from December 8th, 2020, and January 12th, 2021. If there's no need for any discussion, the Chair will... Yes?
I noticed on the January 2021 minutes, it notes, it lists Mr. Jacobs as absent, but it does record his votes on things. So I think if we just took out the absent part, that would be fine.
Okay.
Was your mic on, so?
Yes.
Okay, Shannon, did you, did you get that?
Yes, sir. I made note of it and I'll, I'll make this correction. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So if there's no, no need for any further discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does it have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Garza made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving right along to public hearings, we have one item, Planning Commission adoption of Resolution Number 021P-001, approving conditional use permit application, CUP 21-01 for a cannabis retail facility with delivery and onsite consumption at 144 East Durian Street. Shaun?
Thank you. Commissioners, Chairman, tonight, staff has recommended approval of conditional use permit application number 2101 by adopting Resolution 021P-001 with conditions for a retail cannabis facility with delivery and onsite consumption at 144 East Durian. On January 12th, 2021, the Community Development Department received a conditional use permit application from Casey Dalton of Kalinga Retail Partners LLC to open a retail cannabis facility in the existing building located at 144 East Durian. Staff accepted the application on January 19th and began processing the application for the use permit. Conditional use permits are issued for uses that require special consideration to ensure they can be designed, located, and operated in a manner that will not interfere with the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. The process for review of conditional use permit applications is designed to evaluate possible adverse impacts and to minimize them where impossible through the imposition of special conditions. The project applicant proposes to open a retail cannabis facility with consumption lounge and delivery services in the existing building at 144 East Durian. A consumption lounge shall mean is a location with both onsite retail sale and areas to consume cannabis or cannabis products. A consumption lounge shall have a licensed retail premise that is a physical location from which commercial cannabis activities are conducted. The consumption lounge shall only sell cannabis or cannabis products to adults 21 and over for onsite consumption, either through smoking, vaping, or ingestion of edible or topical products. The space occupied by the consumption lounge shall be definite and distinct from the space where the activities licensed are exercised and shall be accessed through a separate entrance. Onsite consumption lounges and cafes shall only be permitted in the downtown overlay district. So in terms of looking at the analysis of the property, the current zoning and land use designation for the subject property is general commercial. Retail sales, including the consumption lounge cannabis is permitted, subject to approval of conditional use permit or and regulatory permit issued by the police chief. The property at 144 East Durian is approximately 4,800 square feet and is currently vacant with anticipated interior square footage of 4,400 square feet. Kalinga Retail Partners intend to remodel the facility, which will not result in changes to the total interior square or the exterior square footage or interior square footage. The remodel will include demo, construction of various rooms, electrical, mechanical, painting, finished work, and signage. A copy of the floor plans and elevations for the first and second story have been included. Here's a, and then we have a breakdown of the interior square footage. So we have the retail area of 1758, office space of 168, hallways of 456, the lounge area of 1124, restroom of 180, break rooms of 266, and storage of 448. Staff has determined there's no land use compatibility or transitional concerns related to the placement and approval of this use. To the south, we have commercial. To the west, we have commercial and public facilities. To the east, we have additional commercial. To the north, we have commercial as well. Section 9-5129D9 specifies that the retail premise facility should not be located within 600 feet, 600-foot radius of a school providing instruction and kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12, daycare or youth center that is in existence the time the license was issued. In addition, a retail premise facility shall not be located within 100 feet of residential district. Staff has verified that this requirement has been met and the retail location is outside the limited areas for sensitive receptors identified in the plan and zoning code. So to get into the operations of the facility, the applicant plans to feature a dual-venue, adult-use, commercial cannabis store with a cannabis consumption lounge and a technologically-driven delivery service with a range of top-quality licensed products sourced locally and throughout the state. The design will focus on creating an intimate, entertaining, and exclusive facility. The customers will enter the retail store where they'll be asked for their ID and will be checked into the computer system. They'll have the ability to speak to a product expert who can provide education, answers any questions prior to making purchases. The customer will have the option at that point of entering the consumption lounge if they choose. The consumption lounge is a 1,100-square-foot room that is not accessible from outside, identified as future on the initial construction plans. The staff will be well-trained on all the products carried and also be available to provide product information or education of products, product qualities, likely impacts on customers, and set times of the various products and delivery systems. The only cannabis products allowed in the lounge are those purchased by the retail store attached. The delivery service will carry a limited menu and operate out of the back of the store. This will help keep the front of the store strictly for customers in person. The front of the building will be glazed to avoid visual access to the retail space and odor control will be installed to prevent odor from escaping the facility to adjacent properties. In terms of hours, the retail store, including delivery hours of operations, are expected to operate from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Currently, the plan and zoning code limits retail cannabis store hours from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM unless authorized under the issuance of a conditional use permit, which allows the commission to extend those hours to specified times if it is found that the extended hours will not have an impact on the operation and surrounding properties. Staff does not feel that the additional, additional hour to 10:00 PM will have an impact on the surrounding properties. The lounge is expected to operate from 10:00 AM to 2, I mean, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, which is consistent with the plan and zoning code for consumption lounges. In terms of employees, the applicant anticipates requiring, requiring a minimum of six retail employees to conduct daily operations upon opening and expects 10 employees to manage the consumption lounge. Each employee will be at least the legal age to work in a cannabis retail facility and will be required to possess a valid cannabis employee permit issued by the police department. In terms of security, the applicant will provide technology to deter any breaches such as state-of-the-art alarm, camera, and lighting systems that will significantly exceed state requirements for resolution clarity, frames per second, backup tapes, and remote access for law enforcement. They will meet the state's requirement for surveillance cameras and data storage. The facility has been designed to facilitate a robust and integrated system of access control, commercial-grade locks, and backup systems that integrates mechanical and electrical access features, alarm systems, and surveillance cameras. All security guards will be, will state-licensed and carry a valid Department of Consumer Affairs Security Guard Card at all times. One guard shall be on the premise 24/7 to greet patrons, support efficient visitor flow through ID checks, and will be instantly available if any employee needs backup assistance in any situation. The applicant's guards will meet the Kalinga Police, Kalinga Patrol Officers to review protocol, exchange cards, and assure that there's seamless coordination of the prevention duties with the law, with law enforcement. The security team will patrol the business during all hours of the consumption operations, adding to neighborhood public safety and ensuring patrons are safe as well as passersby. Additionally, the applicant stated that to ensure safe, pleasant consumption experience, security guards supporting patrons, patrons in the consumption operations will receive additional training to detect early signs of impairment and intoxication. The security plan and access control plan will be reviewed and approved by the police chief in accordance with state and local laws prior to the issuance of the applicant's regulatory permit. In terms of traffic, the property is situated between Fourth and Fifth Street on East Durian, with West Elm being the major arterial in the city. The total average daily traffic volume in West Elm and North Fifth Street is approximately 7,952 vehicles. Traffic is, traffic is expected to increase with the proposed use, however, it is not expected to exceed that expected volume beyond that of a typical retail operation. It is expected to see an increase in the initial opening of the facility, then balance out during normal operation, operating conditions, roughly about 100 vehicle trips. Determining traffic levels for retail cannabis operations has been difficult to estimate as there are very few licensed dispensaries operating within a rural environment similar to the city of Kalinga. However, with the existing facility currently operating in Kalinga, it does not impact the traffic nor parking availability in the median area. So to go on to parking, the parking standard for retail cannabis operations is one per 300 square feet of floor area. Therefore, the facility is required to provide 15 parking stalls for its staff and patrons. However, this facility is centrally located downtown in the Kalinga Plaza and can take advantage of the parking available along its frontage and surrounding downtown area. There are eight parking stalls that are directly in front of the facility with an additional eight stalls located in front of the adjacent AT&amp;T building, which never uses the open stalls for operations. In addition, there's a city parking facility adjacent to the proposed locations building to the north, which can be, which can accommodate additional parking as well. There's also several other parking locations in the downtown area near the proposed facility that can be used to accommodate parking demand. Also, this facility will operate during normal business hours similar to that of surrounding uses. However, when parking demand is increased in the evening hours, surrounding uses will be closed and available parking in the downtown will be readily available. In terms of the delivery, the proposed cannabis retail and consumption facility will provide delivery services in accordance with the plan and zoning code on state law. The cannabis facilities are typically permitted one attached sign per street frontage that does not exceed 12 square feet in, in area or 20% of the window area of the retail facility, whichever is less, unless a larger sign is permitted under, under conditional use permit not exceeding that of the downtown overlay district. The attached signs are not permitted. The applicant is proposing two light blue, which I've provided the, the PMS 2191 colors, illuminated wall mount signs totaling approximately 58 square feet, which we've attached the elevations for plan for the, the sign style. One will be located on the west-facing building frontage, Durian Avenue, at 20 square feet, and the other, south-facing city parking lot at 38 square feet. The sign code within the downtown overlay district allows for a half a square foot of sign area per linear foot of frontage. So based on the review of the signage plan, the square, the square footage, linear frontage, locations and types of signs proposed, the proposed signs meet the sign regulations within the downtown overlay district as prescribed by the city's cannabis sign regulations. In terms of public notification, public hearing notices were sent out to all property owners within 300 feet of the site and posted as required by state and local law. Since the proposed use is not expanding the footprint of the existing building and a permitted use subject to CUP, the proposed project has been determined to be exempt under CEQA in accordance with Section 15301A for existing facilities. A notice of exemption will be filed with the President of County Clerk's Office and posted with the state, why am I drawing a blank, with the state clearinghouse, once approval has been granted for this application. In terms of fiscal impact, the city is expected to receive an increase in cannabis tax and licensing revenues from this facility, including newly created jobs. So reasons for recommendation, there are three findings that the, the commission must make to approve or disapprove a project if the findings cannot be made. And one is general plan consistency, neighborhood compatibility, and asset for the neighborhood. So with that, Chairman, that's my presentation for the item. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And again, this is a public hearing.
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to address this issue may do so by letting the city clerk know at this time. Vice Chairman Jacobs, you have any questions?
Please make sure that you're unmuted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I think some clarification what this means on, it says, affairs, security guard card at all times, one guard shall be on premises, 24/7, greet patrons, support, efficient visitor flow through ID checks, and to be instantly available if any employee needs help. So we have one guard there, and if an employee has trouble, he'll be there to help the...
Yeah, they'll, they will have, there will be, they will have 24-hour security.
Okay, and that's inside the, the place at all times then?
Yeah, typically where they're checking IDs is where the security guard has been. We've found and, and also as we've dealt with Have a Heart, is that having the presence outside the building is, doesn't actually work. It's more else inside checking IDs. And then if there's any issues outside, they can handle those issues if they need to outside. But typically, we've found that there's less interaction with potential issues when the security guard is inside, which is why we've, there were some changes in the security requirements for Have a Heart, is that the security guard is actually inside. Before, they used to stand outside, used to see them outside. It actually caused more confrontations because people would approach the security guard rather than inside. And we, I mean, obviously, as the chief would attest, we haven't had any major issues at the existing facility as, as of even today. However, the presence of the security guard actually didn't do as much as deterioration. It's more inside checking the IDs, using that. But now they're using their own personnel as onsite security there. But here, they will have their own security.
And then the last question, did we give Have a Heart operations till 10 also?
I, I think so. I didn't say to my report because I could not remember. I can probably look up the old report and probably let you know. But I, I do think I recall originally that they were going to be open till 10, and then they've, they've scaled back their hours, I think, just because of the amount of volume that they're doing that later in the evening.
And then, my last question is, it looks like they're already doing work there. Did they already pull a permit and start doing, looked like some abatement in there and so forth?
Yeah, so we have given them an at-risk permit, which we've done for several other entities, basically saying, hey, you know, you still have to get these, you can't occupy the building. But basically, they're just doing renovations that require standard building permits. So they've been doing a lot. I think right now, they're just doing demo work.
So the, the permit was LLC's name?
Uh, yes, it should have been under either the owner or the applicant, one or the other.
Okay.
But I think we've identified, I think on the, on the cover sheet of the report, it identifies Kalinga Retail Partners as the applicant, and then a state-of-mind LLC is actually the owner of the property.
Can, can I, how long have they owned that building?
Um, I don't know. I know that the owner might be on the, on the call. You might, she might be able to answer that question.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how long she's owned it.
That's it.
Commissioner Helmer?
I have a lot of questions. So do you want me to go next, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay. Piggybacking on Mr. Jacobs' question on security, it says in here that they'll be on-site 24/7. Is that really going to be what?
That was in the application, yes.
But if it's not operational, is there a possibility they're going, I mean, why would they have a security person there when they're closed? Was my only question.
Well, and that's, really, it's going to be up to them because the way the regulations are set, the council did update the, the security requirements for retail operations. And so like Have a Heart used to have 24-hour security. It was extremely expensive and it wasn't bound to be completely effective or a deterioration. And so I imagine their application is, they're proposed, I mean, they're going to be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so they're only, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, so they're only going to be closed for eight hours, with employees probably leaving and coming and going in between those early hours. So I imagine it's going to be up to them to kind of adjust that if they need to. That's what they put in their application. It's not necessarily has to be conditioned that way.
Okay.
Because they still ultimately, as they're operational, unless specifically conditioned, that they'll need to have security at least during the business hours.
Okay, well, I was, I was thinking about the, the example from Have a Heart when they ended up scaling back, and I wasn't sure if that had to come back before the Planning Commission or not.
No, so what happened was, is when we adopted the retail regulations for cannabis, we adopted this, all the security requirements by resolution. So it actually made it easier to evolve or make some adjustments if, in fact, we found that, you know what, this isn't really working, it's not cost-effective for our businesses, our business owners, and it would make it easier than having to go into full, like text amendment, rezones, public hearings, just to change, we don't require, we don't need, we don't need 24-hour security, we just need it for, you know, during business hours. So there was a change in that. I think it was, I can't remember how long ago, maybe a year ago, less than a year ago, we changed that.
Okay. Now, in terms of customer flow. Okay, the ordinance requires that there's a separate entrance for the lounge.
Yes, inside, it's still inside the building.
Okay, and that was my question. It doesn't have to be a separate outside entrance?
No, no. So what they'll do is they'll come in to the retail area, they'll be able to purchase their products, and then they can either choose to leave, or they can choose to go in the door. And I think you can see from the floor plan.
Right.
It shows that door and it says future. They'll, that's where you would enter the, the lounge.
Okay, so a person that just wants to buy retail goes in to the retail area, purchases, walks out. The person who wants to go to the lounge purchases their product there at the same retail area and then goes down the hall or whatever into the door into the lounge?
Yep.
Okay. If they, and it says that they will consume, only consume what they buy there in the lounge?
Yes, and that's state law.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it also seemed to imply, and maybe I just read it wrong, that they buy it, they go into the lounge, do they have to consume the entire product in the lounge? They can go back out with some of it left over?
They can, yeah, because it's not illegal to have open cannabis, legal cannabis products in public.
Okay. So they go in and they buy something. Go into the lounge and use it, part of it, and then they walk back out with the unused portion?
Yes, and it has, but it still has to be in the original packaging. So if you, however the packaging is, typically it's all child-safe, so it's either going to have a, a kind of a zipper, not a zipper, what do you call it? Like a Ziploc bag, right? So it's, it's going to be either resealed, or it's going to be in a jar, or, you know, there's always going to be something that they can transport it in.
Okay.
So you won't be able to just have like loose leaf in your pocket, or...
Okay, okay.
But yeah, they'll have, it'll have to be in the, in the packaging.
Okay.
Not like an open beer.
See, that's exactly what I was kind of thinking. And then somebody could come in at 10 o'clock in the morning and stay till 2 o'clock in the morning. There's no restriction on numbers of hours?
There's still, I think, this is going to, this is where state law kind of kicks in, is the actual maximum amount that someone can purchase is one, and actually how much they can consume.
Is there a difference?
I, I am not aware of that. So I'm not sure if there's a limit. I, I imagine that they're not going to have someone there all day. I can't say yes or no. I know that they're, they're going to manage, I, I see in the way that, in talking to the applicant, is it's going to be managed very similar to a bar. Right? So...
Okay, and, and that's what I'm trying to, that's, that's the picture that I'm trying to get clear in my head, how this is actually going to work.
And what I, what I would recommend is, I think Casey's on the line. I, I think, I've been in communication with her earlier today. It sounds like she should be on the line. And if she is, then she can probably definitely answer those questions and give you some assurances on how they're going to handle that. Because we do know there is, you know, state law has some guidelines in terms of how consumption lounges operate. And, but I, I know Casey would probably have a little bit better idea what the state's going to regulate when it comes to, you know, how much a person can actually consume. Because there's a limit on how much they can sell to somebody, but I'm not sure on the consumption side.
Okay, because I did note that there was, they specified train, special training for their staff in terms of, you know, awareness of how people, how influenced they are. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So probably several more of my questions might also be more appropriate for Casey, too. Question on the delivery service. It's noted as technology-driven delivery service.
Very general, just similar to a lot of the other ones where it's app-based, you can place the order online on, you know, on an app, put your address in, it's a cash transaction. So when they, when they come to deliver, it's very similar to like what Have a Heart does now.
It's like online?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about the delivery part? How is it going to be delivered?
The product's delivered to their house.
Yeah.
So typically, we have all the regulations. So when we talk about delivery, it's going to operate very similar to the way that it operates here. There's, there's a lot of stringent state law when it comes to delivery, without how much cash you can carry, how much product you can have, as well as we have a whole delivery section in our ordinance. And that's why I was very brief about it in my staff report, because the code is very specific in terms of how delivery should occur.
Okay, because here's what that phrase raised in my mind, because it is very general. Are they going to use drones or robots to deliver this stuff?
No, because it's illegal anyway. They wouldn't be able to deliver that anyways.
Okay, I feel much better.
The state changes, I don't know. Well, you can always condition and say no delivery by drones if you really want to.
Well, I just found it interesting that, that choice of words, it didn't just say online, you know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's app-based. A lot of these companies have, you know, pretty sophisticated applications, online ordering, that kind of stuff. That's what they're, they're using that as.
And why, why is their delivery menu going to be limited?
That would be a question for, and it may be just a term they use, but that's, that would probably be a question for the applicant in terms of...
Let me see if there's any, any other questions that would be yours. Oh, the signage. I noticed that the signage was quite generous in terms of the amount that they're allowed to have. And I know that signage has been a historical issue in town for, you know, a long time. Is being as generous with them going to set precedence for some other people that have issues?
No, so this does not, what, what this does is that, what we did is when we updated the retail code after Have a Heart started, originally it was 15 square feet or whatever, I think I said on the report, 15 square feet was the max for retail, specifically to cannabis. Like, we didn't want, we wanted them super small, right? Well, there was some pushback from that, and it was a little bit, I think, based on the, the signage, it wasn't like out of control. And, you know, Have a Heart's logo isn't all over the place. Cookies is kind of the same way. It's not all over the place. But the the signage still does not exceed what any other business would be permitted downtown. So what we did is we said, instead of restricting cannabis specifically to a certain size, we wanted to treat them the same way and basically say, okay, but you still have to do it by conditional use permit, which is this is the time to do it because you're already going through the use permit process for the permit. Is that it would allow them to meet the 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 actual criteria of what every other business in the downtown overlay district would be, would be restricted by. So anybody next door, anybody on the plaza, they're restricted the same that were required. We're not giving them any more than what any other business would actually get in that down, in the downtown area. So they have two two, uh, frontages. So that's why they're able to get both. But it's still the max on both, on both signage. They don't exceed their overall, uh, square footage.
Okay. Now, will they have the same potential liability regarding their customers as a an alcohol bar would in terms of, you know, if somebody goes out, spends, you know, whatever, and then goes out and does something.
Well, they are legal entities. The the owners are legal entities under a limited liability company. So they have the same liabilities and risk as any other business would.
Okay, but I was thinking specifically in terms of, um, like a bar that if somebody goes out, drinks too much at that bar and then, you know, they have, I'm not sure what their liability is.
I don't know. That's probably more state law in terms of how how they determine that. I imagine it's, it's, it's driving while intoxicated or riding a bike or whatever. I imagine the laws are still very similar to to that compared to, you know, alcohol.
You're talking about being over-served.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and in the liability of over-serving somebody and what the ramifications would that be?
If it would be the same as for an alcohol.
I I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
Okay. Do you know where the closest cannabis lounge is to Colina?
Uh, as far as I know, and Casey might be able to answer this even more, but I think it's West Hollywood. I don't, I think they're proposing one. I think Lamore is too, but I think that as of right now, with how close anybody else is, this would be the the close, I think the closest right now in the valley. Or San Francisco, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think, I know there's some proposed in the valley. I don't know if that, that one might be a consumption lounge.
I just, I I just went by it today. And and it looks like it, it could be.
Cause they do have a, they do have a retail facility there, but I'm not sure if it has the consumption component. I'm not, I'm, I can't, don't quote me on that. But I'm not aware of any in the valley. I do hear that there are some that are coming. Maybe in Woodlake and some other locations, but I'm not aware of any active right now other than the West Hollywood. And then a few probably, or more than a few, probably in San Francisco.
Okay, given that, um, what is the anticipated, um, business population for this lounge gonna be?
I would, I would defer to Casey on that.
Okay.
Um, I think they've done a pretty good market analysis to kind of see what they, what the draw is going to be. Um, but I think she probably would have, uh, have a lot more to speak of on that. Particularly to the the market side of the of the facility.
Because, because it does, you know, someone did raise the concern with me that unlike the retail part of it, these will, you know, this will draw people from possibly all over the valley who will come and consume here. And the the impact on, you know, public safety related to that.
For the record, I just looked it up. Woodlake, they don't have, they just opened a second dispensary and that one is proposing a consumption.
Yeah, okay, that's what I've been hearing too.
Um, and, um, was there any contact with the library about this project?
They were noticed, they were notified.
They were notified?
Yeah, through the public notice.
Was there, okay, just just when everybody else was at the same time?
Yeah, and they, and they actually get emailed the public hearing notices because they post the notices for us at the library as a public location. So they get notification twice.
Okay, but the, as far as you know, the business did not connect with them in terms of this is what we're gonna do.
I, that would be.
And I know the, the, you know, the law deals with schools and daycare centers and things like that, but that is a big draw for children.
Yeah, I am not, I'm not aware of any communication that the applicants had with the library, but again, that might be a question. All right, and I think Casey's listening, so she'll be able to answer.
Other just operational things and price things that, um, are probably Casey's.
Okay, and she, I think she's available now. Yeah, I think Shannon promoted her to speak.
Oh, okay. Casey?
She seems to be having some difficulties.
Shannon, or is she there?
Um, I can see her.
Okay.
Casey, if you could hear us, you should be able to speak.
Think she was. Do you guys wanna move on and then if we get, if we get her back, then we'll, we'll have her intervene?
And is Cookies really the name of it?
It'll be the brand, yeah.
I'm fine. She, she did a good job.
Good job. The one thing that I didn't have asked or answered is do we know what their delivery area radius will be?
It really depends on the demand. I I know it probably shifts. Uh, I know Have a Heart go, they periodically go all the way out to Fresno because there's no active dispensaries in Fresno. They're actually out in Fresno quite a bit. Um, and depending on the products that people are looking for, they could be going within a mile of an existing dispensary in Hanford, Lamore, Woodlake, because it just depends on who carries what.
Right, but with it being cookies, I can see a demand for that outside of Colina. And then my follow-up question to that would be, how are the tax revenues distributed like for someone who purchases in Fresno or in Avonel or in Hanford, which is outside of the county?
Point of sale is in Colina. All gross receipts are are can, are can, uh, everything is transacted here in Colina. Yep, because based on where the business is located.
Hey Sean, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, Casey is gonna call in if you can tell whoever's moderating to look for a phone call.
Okay.
Difficulties. Okay, thanks.
On LLCs, are they able to open bars and in liquor stores and so forth through an LLC?
Uh, yes. However, if you're referring to them actually being able to open up a bar as well, that is not permitted under state law. So if you actually own a, if you own a dispensary or operate a dispensary as a licensed owner, you cannot hold an ABC license anywhere in California.
Oh, okay.
So there is no commingling of the, like, so you can't have a bar and a, uh, a cannabis facility, yeah.
So but is a, if you wanted to open a liquor store under an LLC, we would permit that? The city would be okay with that?
Under an LLC? Yeah, I mean, this would be, it'd be a business. So it wouldn't be an individual person, but it could be a business opening, yeah. Cause a limited liability company could be just one, could be a single, two people.
Yeah, and I, another question, I know there's partners that, do we get to know who these partners are or is it?
Anybody that is content, considered an owner? Though they will be required by code and by state law that if they're 20% or more ownership, then they are required to go through backgrounds. So when when the regulatory permit is reviewed and, um, approved, the owners, anybody that has ownership in that LLC that have 20% or more are required to be on that application and will go through backgrounds.
Do you know how many partners there are with this?
I am not aware. Casey might be able to answer that. I'm not sure if it's just her or if it's other, if there's any other partners involved in either one of the, uh, the LLCs.
Casey's on the phone right now. If you can look at the phone number 818-635-8795.
Ms. McGowan, did you say the last four digits were 8795?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Casey, go ahead. You just need to unmute yourself.
Is there a certain button you push on the phone? Star or something?
I think it might be star six, but I'm not certain.
I'm having Casey call me and she's gonna talk through my phone. So just know that this is not me speaking. Here's Casey. Hang on, hang on. One sec. Okay.
Oh, my goodness. Sorry about that. I I was on Zoom and I could see everyone and and I think you could see me, but you couldn't hear me. And then I was on the phone, but thank you, Commission, for hearing this. And I'm chomping at the bit to answer all these questions. Um, I just, I don't know if I should just wait and have you ask or if I should address the ones that I can remember that were asked.
Can you hang on a second, Casey? Larry, is it possible for you to turn the volume up in here? Cause it's difficult to hear her. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Casey, if you want to go ahead and just answer as much as you can and then we can.
Oh, those were some great questions. Those were some great questions. Thank you for asking them. Um, as far as, uh, we do think that there's gonna be a demand here for the lounge. It's not gonna be like a bar where people are parking themselves there for the day. Um, our goal is to try to keep this as organized and safe as possible by having, um, reservations only to start that that allow for 90 minutes total. So they'll be blocked out kind of like a restaurant or a theater or, you know, something of that nature using a restaurant-type app. And, um, and take a deposit on that, on that reservation. And then that deposit can be used for the retail store. So for instance, if you take a $50 deposit for 90 minutes and you're booked between, you know, let's say 3 p.m. and 4:30. Um, just to keep the order within the lounge, especially those that are coming in from out of town. Um, the partner is Cookies. Cookies is the largest worldwide brand in cannabis. Um, they've done very well. They have, they have a a great reputation and, um, some very professional executives that that have been a pleasure to work with. Um, a pretty fierce team on both the operation side and the compliance side. Um, they are 20% owners in the venture. Um, our side is 80%. We wanted to keep the control with our relationship with Colina and feeling is very protective over the city and the community and you know, just the other businesses in our area. We definitely wanted to make sure that that we were the ones, you know, at the wheel here to make sure that if there's any tweaks or changes working with the city, that we can make those, um, as they come up. There, there are many known and there are many unknowns. And so we'd like to address those as they come up, but we we definitely do have a plan. Um, the delivery, the delivery service we anticipate, I know that, um, the city of Fresno is opening and there's many licenses there. Uh, there is a consumption lounge. So our, our closest consumption lounge is actually Lamore. They did award a consumption lounge. My understanding is that they didn't open the doors yet, so I don't know if they will open before we will open. Um, but that is the closest consumption lounge. Other than that, uh, operational, I know that, um, I spoke to the owner of Berkeley Patient Group today just to get his experience. He's been open for a year now and he said that he's happy to be any kind of reference to the city. Or otherwise, he hasn't had any problems and has only had a very positive experience so far. As far as the products themselves, um, you know, we're under pretty strict regulations when it comes to, um, the child-resistant packaging. And that is resealable. So anything that's consumed within the consumption lounge and then you're gonna take home, you're gonna still leave with the same, um, the same bags that you would have that it, as if you would have walked into the store, just purchased and then went to your vehicle. You're gonna leave it with it in that bag, but the product itself will be in a resealable, child-resistant container. Those are all the ones I could remember, but I'm here to answer anymore.
Okay, and so you said there, there's going to be a reservation system, but if somebody walks up and, um, and there's an opening, would they be able to, um, like, sign up right there and come in?
Yeah, they would. I I still think we would go through the reservation system, but we would just, you know, the same way like with a, with a restaurant. If you have a reservation, great. If you're a walk-up and the space is there, then yes, you could slide into that slot.
And what are you envisioning initially, um, as, um, you know, what kind of numbers are you anticipating for both the lounge itself and then for the retail business when you first open?
Sure. So, so I think that just like Sean described, um, the cookie stores in general. I mean, it, they definitely, there is a lot of, um, marketing and they have a really well-known following. Um, so I do believe that, you know, when the store first opens, I believe there will be, there will be lines around the block. You know, um, I've seen it with all the other stores that they've opened. They've opened a number of stores in California and and that's the launch. I, as far as the day-to-day business, there's two different things that we're looking at. We're looking at existing, when doing this analysis, we're looking at Have a Heart's numbers. Um, and then we're looking at, you know, the existing cookie stores and and one model was Modesto, but it's really hard to take the, um, to take the same population that's in Colina to say that, okay, we're about, you know, eight to 12 minutes off of the freeway. There, there are so many factors we don't know, but we're planning as though we're, as far as security and as far as employees and as far as all the rest of it, we're anticipating that the lounge will be, will be booked. I believe the lounge will be booked around the clock. When West Hollywood, um, when West Hollywood first opened, I don't know how much of it had to do with the fact that it was somewhat of a tourist attraction. But they did have, it was really hard to get a reservation. I mean, it took a couple of months to get a reservation. Will it maintain that? I don't know. Um, but but we're going to, we're gonna ramp up and have the support as if it's going to be very busy.
And what's the maximum occupancy in the lounge?
That will be determined, um, with the, uh, CFO once they look at the, what fixtures are permanent compared to, I believe, can be removable. So we're, we're gonna wait and the city will make that determination for us.
But you've got some numbers that you, you know, like a range of numbers that you're anticipating?
Yep, so we, so we, I believe that the, I believe we have a total of 10 staff in and out, but that includes especially like kind of ramped up for, for COVID sake, you know, like additional cleaning. But I believe that, I believe the lounge itself will probably hold around 20 people. Um, but again, you know, I think the CFO will be the final determination on that.
Okay, um.
That just, that just, um, reminded me of another question that you, that you asked regarding, um, the eight hours that were closed in between.
Yes.
And, um, and for right now, we'd like to keep the security there because, uh, you know, in the beginning, almost like a soft launch, not knowing if, um, you know, whether someone will have to, will have to come in early or stay late or a cleaning crew, um, or, you know, anything, anything of that nature. Um, that's why we wanted to start off again with the most support possible and the most security possible and then and then make those determinations as we continue to operate the business and and if it needs a little bit less, then take our foot off the gas a little bit, but kind of start as safe and overnumbered as possible to begin with.
Now, in the lounge, will you be serving any non-cannabis food or drinks?
So it's a little bit, so we all, we will. And, um, we've actually had a conversation with the Salty Pickle across the parking lot from us, a family-owned business. And, um, And, um, what we're, what we're planning on doing is having a menu, whether or not that's on the tables or on the, you know, an app on the phone of having, you know, specific items that are only for the lounge that can be ordered. And then we're not taking any part of that business. It's just supporting another local neighbor, neighboring business where they, you know, someone, a customer of ours could purchase our products, go into the lounge and then, for instance, order a sandwich. They would bring that sandwich over and, and they could use their credit card on the app to purchase that.
And that would be available only during whatever hours the Salty Pickle would be working. So it wouldn't be till like 2:00?
Correct. And the Salty Pickle, um, they actually brought up a good point. They said based on, they said, look, if you end up operating seven days a week and you have, and you have people at 10 o'clock at night that are leaving the lounge and want to grab dinner, they said they're going to also keep their eye on the volume. They said they have no problem staying open late themselves to cater to any businesses coming in, you know, to cater to any overflow.
I noticed in the drawing on the, 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 not the lounge area, just the regular retail area. There was furniture in there, I believe a couch and some tables.
We do have, we do have some waiting area. And tables are more so holding the product.
People are what?
The, the tables are made to hold product.
But I think there was a couch in there, like, so people can come into the retail area and sit down too?
That's if they're waiting to be served. But not for consumption, only for the retail side itself.
Then is there a price differential for someone who's buying it and taking it home or buying it and going into the lounge?
No, no. In fact, um, it's, the lounge is, is not a moneymaker. Right? The lounge is almost like what, it's an accommodation. So the same way that a nice hotel may have a spa and a pool and you're not going to pay extra for that. But you may stay at that hotel compared to another hotel because of the amenities. So that's how we're seeing this. It's not something that you charge people coming in. It's just, we think that the store itself will be something special and, um, and will create more business for the retail portion of the store.
Um, and then I noticed the delivery service, you said the delivery service was going to be a limited menu. Why is it the full menu?
Regulations only allow, right now, they, they are limited on the value of the product. So the store itself can have, for instance, let's say 100 different brands. And let's say, you know, as far as the amount of, um, product there, you're not limited on a dollar value. So you may have, you know, $300, $400,000 worth, more and more worth of product in the store. Well, one delivery driver is limited on how much product. There's a lot of regulations around, um, delivery drivers, even though they can go anywhere in California, that's not really realistic. And then certain cities limit, certain cities have, like for instance, if you deliver into West Hollywood, you have to have a local permit in West Hollywood in order to be able to deliver in. Now that purchase, just like Sean explained, the taxes go back to Kalinga. But you would also have to hold some sort of a permit to operate within that city. The, the cars themselves, the vehicles themselves are limited to, um, $5,000 total worth of product. And 3,000 of that, I believe, is, um, is, has to be a scheduled planned delivery. So there's an app, for instance, right now we have, we have a delivery service in Southern California. It's called Stash Dash and there's an app. And so if somebody goes on the app and they order, let's say some infused gummies, we, they have a planned delivery that we can go to them. Now, if another delivery order comes in while they're in their car and they're on that delivery, the amount of product that is in the car is designated for what is planned and what is not planned. And there are limitations on that. So you, we can't carry the entire menu of what's in the store. It's not realistic and it's not permissible because you would only carry, for instance, like, you know, if you had a Snickers bar, a Milky Way, a Twix, you know, you could only carry one of each and before you would hit your limit. So you really, you want to do a curated menu where there are only certain items that's limited to what is the most popular, what is purchased the most often.
Okay. And then my last question is, did, did you have any contact with the library during this process?
We did not reach out to them directly. We knew that they would be notified through the conditional use process. And we know that, that they have our contact information and they did not reach out after getting the notification. But we were open to any discussion if they wanted to have it.
Okay. That is all the questions I have.
Hey, Guy, I want to add one thing that I was able to look. We did extend the hours of operation till 10 o'clock for Have a Heart as well.
Hi, I've got a few questions. First of all, you had said that you would have local products on the shelf. Which local products are you planning on carrying?
Only ours. No, just kidding.
Because you know, we've got, we've got a few businesses here.
I know. And now that we have outdoor cultivation, which by the way, I should just let the commission know, we, we actually just did our final harvest on Friday and we have new plants going in the ground, seedlings going in at the beginning of March and expanding that footprint. And everyone said that we would not be successful growing in winter. And, um, I've never seen so many, every, our entire team continues to say that, that Kalinga is the perfect place to grow, that they would see fog and horrible weather all over the place and you, and you just come over the hill and it's like, like a rainbow on, on our facility. So, um, we, we had, you know, incredible luck and, and learned a lot through that process, but we'll definitely have obviously our own products where, you know, making gummies and tinctures and topicals. And, um, you know, have flower that we're growing ourselves. But then we also have Next Green Wave that's in town and we have a lot of other businesses. So, you know, the goal is for us, the goal is to pull people off of the freeway, you know, that are in between, um, Los Angeles and San Francisco or San Francisco and Los Angeles, whatever way they're, they're traveling and have them come have an incredible experience. Hopefully they'll, they'll be able to go to other businesses, you know, in Kalinga as well. But, um, you know, to be able to have, have a taste, you know, Kalinga really put its neck out there before anyone else. They took a chance on us. They took a chance for the industry. And I believe they deserve to reap the benefits of that, you know, to be able to buy a T-shirt that, that says, you know, Kalinga and be able to like, we have a lot of pride in operating in the city and continuing to expand our footprint. And so to support the other cannabis companies, we're, we want to have all of those products on the shelf. And in addition to that, um, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of, you know, local people who have not been able to afford the product. I mean, I think that California will figure out this whole tax structure, but it really makes it challenging where it's easier for people to get products on the black market than it is through the regulated market. And because we grow our own and because we produce our own and we're fully integrated now with a, you know, hopefully a retail store if all this goes through, we're able to offer a discount to anyone who's been shown a Kalinga ID and show us their, and show us their, um, their zip code. And we can, we can offer a significant discount. So if that's a topical for, you know, our brightest or if it's a joy or whatever it is, there, we have a lot of pride. Like the same way, I think we mentioned this before, but if you were in, you know, Wisconsin, you would, you would, you would hopefully get a good deal on cheese or Idaho, you'd, you'd want to get the potato or whatever that is. I, we really want to make sure that we're taking care of, of our locals first that took a chance on us.
Okay. So you went ahead and answered one of my other questions, which is, were you going to offer a discount for Kalinga residents? But one thing that I thought you would touch on, which is my other, another question, um, are you planning on doing a signage campaign on I-5?
We're not allowed to. We're not allowed to. So, so unfortunately, um, there was just a lawsuit that went through recently, but, but it's interstate regulations that you're not allowed to advertise on any interstate highway and the five is an interstate highway. I think that it has to do with, um, interstate commerce and the concern of people moving products, but unfortunately that's not an option for us. So we've tried to get very creative and, um, and actually, uh, John had a very, very, from building, had a very funny suggestion. I, I was saying that, you know, maybe we could do an ad for Cookies clothing and maybe you could say Kalinga on a shirt, you know, but really you're advertising clothing. But he had an even better one. He said, he said, you know, come see the Kalinga library located next to the store and consumption lounge. You know, we, we are, we probably are, that's a joke. We're probably not going to do it, you know, anything like that, but we are going to try to. Another, another thing that, you know, I thought about was possibly, they have this adopted highway where you can, where you can have your contractor, it's a five-year commitment of keeping a two-mile stretch of the interstate clean or doing certain planting. I thought it would be really cool to do the off round, you know, do some really like amazing plants and trees that would call your attention. And then, and then the, there's a sign that goes up that says this was sponsored by, you know, Cookies Kalinga or some, or something of that nature. So those are all the things we're looking into. It is very challenging, you know, in cannabis to have any kind of digital marketing or any kind of signage, you know, to date.
So with an interstate being off limits, would it be possible to put any signage on the 198, the 41 or the 99?
I believe so. I believe so because I think it's just interstate. So I believe that permissible. Do they have, I've never seen.
Cause like the 198.
Probably don't work on the 99. You're right. That's a good idea.
And then my other question is, where is the closest Cookies to here? Because Cookies is highly marketable, as you well know. And if you were putting those signs in Fresno, in Visalia, in Hanford, which are not on an interstate, that could possibly draw people here. Or at least improve your delivery.
I need to check and see where the closest Cookies is. Um, I believe it's the Modesto location, but I can check and see what that is, where that is.
Yeah, because I, I, I'm well aware of the Cookies brand and what a draw that has. So I don't know, just a thought.
Great thought.
And those are all the questions I have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so very much. Is, uh, Casey, do you have anything, uh, any final remarks you'd like to make or?
I don't, you know, the only thing that came up and, and I understand if I have to come back, um, I think this is my mistake. I think I have to come back. I, I want to ask Sean, you know, how the procedure, how this works. But I did want to include, um, medical patients. You know, we wanted to do adult use 21 and over, but we also don't want to leave out the medical patients. Those are holding medical cards, you know, doctor recommendations. And that, and that age range goes down. So if somebody has, you know, epilepsy or whatever and they're 19 years old, they can hold a medical card. And I noticed that in the beginning, we just referred to 21 and over. So I don't know if I have to come back around, um, and ask for that, or if that can be added here. I, I just, I feel like I made a mistake there.
I don't think so.
We want to be both medical and adult use.
I don't think our, our regulations differentiate, uh, whether it's for medicinal use or for, uh, commercial, like just basic commercial.
Okay. It's just the medical use has a different age range and that starts at 18.
Yeah. And I think that that was the way it was set up with, um, with the, uh, with, with Have a Heart too. I think it's the same because you basically would just get both medical and commercial use license.
Yeah, Have a Heart, I know that if you're 18 or over and have the medical license, you could go in to purchase. If you have a medical license for a child, then the adult goes in to purchase, I believe.
Yeah, this would, this would permit obtaining a medical and a commercial license. So I don't see that being, that was kind of inherent. I may not be specific in here, um, but my understanding is.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that one out.
If it's permitted, should we go ahead and?
Just for the record, you may want to specify that for the record. Just make sure that when the approval happens that it is for both medicinal and for, uh, commercial. But.
Sean, would it be limited then to just purchasing and not using the lounge if you're under 21?
Of course. And that's going to, state law is going to dictate that. Yeah. So yeah, for the lounge, it would, I would imagine for the lounge, we would have to make sure it's for commercial use only. Or, and it's going to be 21 and over anyways for that, for the lounge.
I don't know if it is on the state level. I think that it also allows for patients.
Under 21?
That could be seen as discrimination, you know?
I don't know.
That's my only concern, you know, is that, is that it could be seen as someone who's allowed to buy, believe that you can come in and you can't.
Should we say something about deferring to state law on that?
We could.
Would there be a liability for someone under 21 if?
I don't, that liability, I have no idea on liability based on what's, what state law. I don't know if there's a, if there's a restriction on age if they are a patient or not.
Would that be the city attorney to give us some direction on that?
I don't know. I think it'd be up to the commission if they want to, if you want to limit it to 21 and over for the consumption lounge.
Is that anything that could come back on the city or would that strictly go on the business?
It wouldn't come back on the city.
Wouldn't that be covered under the, in Exhibit A? The applicant should at all times comply with all applicable state, federal and local ordinances, statutes and regulations related to retail, commercial cannabis operations.
Yes. Yeah. So it definitely blankets state law. I mean, there's still, just like with, you know, if you get, get an ABC license, you get a conditional use permit for a bar from the commission. Then you go and open a bar and you serve someone that's 19 years old, you're going to face repercussions from the state regarding that. The city is not liable for that. The city is not permitting it. So when it comes to the consumption, the commission, the way this is structured, it would default to what state law would, what would allow for the consumption lounge or for the, on the retail side.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if the state has, um, provided any opinion regarding that or not.
But in terms of what we would approve or disapprove as the commission, that, that 21 and over isn't in any of the language that would be, we would be forwarding to the, to the city council. That's just, that was just in your write-up, right?
Yeah. And that was from the applicant. That was related to the employees, I think. And the employees would be 21 and over.
Yeah, because it's, it's in your, it's in your analysis. It's the only time I think I see adults 21 years of age or older.
Yeah. And that does say, okay, so that, in, let me see, because if that language is there, that's in our ordinance. So let me look at the ordinance just to verify. Because that language in that, that introductory paragraph, that is specific to our ordinance. So I will verify that because that may, that may be the restriction of 21 and over in the consumption lounge. So give me one sec and, uh, I will look that up for you guys. But I bet that, that I think that language is directly out of the zoning text.
Question, if that is, and state law does not have that because they find it discriminatory if we put in that it's 21 years of age and older only without a medicinal variation on that, would the city be liable?
No, because the city can always have the right to institute a harsher regulation when it comes to that. Yeah. So following definitions, so cannabis consumption lounge shall be the location with both onsite retail sale areas to consume cannabis and cannabis products. The Consumption Cafe Lounge shall have a licensed retail premise. So it's really right on the staff report. The Consumption Cafe Lounge shall only sell cannabis or cannabis products to adults 21 years of age or older for onsite consumption. So the way our code is written, it's limited to 21 and over. So it would require a change in the, in the regulations, but the commission does not have the ability to allow anything, uh, younger or anything older than, or younger than 21. So that's, that's, that was adopted. And I'm, my understanding is I'd have to look to see, but I know the definition that we created here, I think comes from state law.
Okay. But that, that would only apply to the consumption part.
Only the consumption lounge, all the retail functions.
Retail would be those under with the proper, um, license and stuff like that could go in and purchase.
Yes, exactly.
Sean, did you get any, um, feedback from any notices that were sent out?
No.
Any further discussion? Do we have anybody else that wanted to make, um, a point on the call?
Yes, if I could, I have another, uh, Zoom I have to get to. Um, my name is Jackie McGowan and, uh, thank you so much for this great discussion and that was an excellent report. Sean, it's really good to see your face again.
You too. Well, kind of.
Well, most of it. Uh, my name is Jackie McGowan. I'm a patient and an advocate in cannabis industry. And I'm here tonight to show my support for Ocean Grove and for the approval of their CUP for a retail facility. I began my activism in 2014 by sneaking cannabis oil into the hospital rooms of children with cancer. I'm extremely grateful that we now have a regulated industry in the state so that I no longer have to risk going to jail in order to help really sick children get access to this plant. I understand that there may be concerns from within the community about another cannabis business opening up in Kalinka regarding crime, but you've yet to see any, a single incident occur at any of your existing facilities so far. And Kalinka was a very early adopter of this industry. In fact, a study was published in late 2019 that concluded that simply adding one dispensary to a neighborhood led to a reduction of 17 crimes per month per every 10,000 residents. This study was published in the Regional Science and Urban Economics Journal. Another interesting study has been published just last month, uh, that, that looked at 812 counties in 23 states in this country. It discovered that the more dispensaries a county had, the lower the opioid related deaths there were. In particular, it found that when a county increased the number of dispensaries from one to two, just as you're about to do tonight, the statistic increased the, from 14% reduction in opioid related deaths to 21%. That study can be found at BMJ.com and it's a medical research journal. Ocean Grove has proved to be a reliable cannabis partner to your community. And tonight I trust that you will honor that relationship by approving this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, if I could add one additional thing, um, it is in state statute restricting, uh, the age of 21 or over in a consumption lounge. So my, my, that paragraph and my, like my second or third paragraph in the beginning of the staff report, that's pretty much right out of the state statute is what all we use in our ordinances as well.
Perfect. Alrighty, there are no other comments from the public?
Chairman, I, I do have one more comment.
Okay.
Um, Felicia? I believe I'm saying your name right. Go ahead and, and speak.
Hi, my name is Felicia Gomez. I work in Kalinka every day and bring my children to the Kalinka Library almost every week, at least one day a week. I am all for bringing a cannabis lounge to Kalinka because right now I see people using marijuana in cars, parking lots, driving around, smoking. And maybe if we were to bring in a, a lounge, they'd be able to go there instead of driving around and, you know, being unsafe for the community. And it'd be safer if they're able to stay somewhere and, you know, use cannabis there.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, any further comments?
What? No, Chairman, not at this time.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. If there's no need for further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
I second.
Okay. Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve CUP, uh, 021P dash zero zero one. And Commissioner Pruitt made the second, uh, second of the motion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Garza?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacob?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Uh, no. Motion carries for one. Moving right along. Congratulations. We hope that it is successful. Um, moving right along to department reports. Any?
I have none tonight. Chairman?
Okay. Um, any commissioner announcements? No. Uh, just remember it's the beginning of the year. Form 700 forms are due either on April 1st or April 2nd. Isn't that, is that correct Shannon? Is it April 2nd?
I believe it's the first.
Okay. So we'll go with the first. Um, if there's nothing further from every, everybody, meeting adjourned.